In our meeting, first of all, I want to thank everybody for being here and thank everyone for their patience over the past, what is it, a year and a half, the difficult situations we've been in. I'm really proud to see that not only our agencies, but individuals with disabilities have been taking on responsibilities to look out for their neighbor and to make sure that people are not only getting vaccinated, but being safe during this time. And it really is an honor to do this and look back to see what everyone has done. So before we get to our speaker, Terri Sap, do you want to go ahead and make some comments about what's going on with vaccinations? And then we'll follow it up with, what was his name, Brian? Okay, Terri?
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. Sorry I missed the last meeting, but hopefully you had a chance to look at the video that the county made that kind of helps folks prepare for their visit to one of the vaccination sites. And it actually highlights a lot of the accommodations that we made. Many of those were the result of the feedback from all of you. So thank you because you helped us deliver a better product. And the video is available on the county YouTube. It was on the Facebook page as well. Over my shoulder, you'll see the, what we call the move or the mobile operations outreach vehicle. We actually now have one fixed county vehicle. It's ours. And then we have a rental that we just got. It's actually just rolled out of here a few minutes ago. So these are mobile units that what they're doing is they're going out to a lot of the hotspots in the county. And a lot of these are neighborhoods where folks can't, for whatever reason, or don't want to travel out to one of the other sites. So these are smaller sites. They tend to be anywhere from 100 to 200 doses. We kind of roll in, we set everything up, we do a couple hours, and then we roll out. We have outreach teams that go into these communities ahead of time and leaflet flyer, put door hangers out so that they can let the community members know that we're there. And that way they can take advantage of this opportunity. So we're hitting a lot of these neighborhoods that haven't had anything. So we've been in Guineau, we're going out to Owens Mills tomorrow. Today, we're going to be out at Deep Creek Middle School. The other mobile unit right now is actually taking care of some county employees at a county function. So we're trying to really hit all these little pockets and areas where we see our vaccination numbers are down. And we're definitely seeing results. So we've been doing a number of these small health equity sites and these pop-up sites. And the county data team has actually been able to demonstrate that when we hit these areas, that the vaccination numbers actually do go up. So we know that even though they're not huge numbers like we're used to seeing at the Cow Palace, they are definitely making a big difference. So that's my five minutes. I think my time is up.
Terri? If you're going into different ethnic neighborhoods, do you have individuals going with your mobile unit that speak Spanish or any other type of language that's needed in that area?
Yes, in fact, our health equity team are fully bilingual. So Sisters Academy, for example, that's been doing about 400 shots each time we're there. The entire staff are bilingual English and Spanish, as well as when they go into the community to promote the clinics and get folks to come out. We just did one on, what day is it? Sunday. So we did one on Sunday at the Baltimore Association of Nepalese Americans. And there we had four interpreters who were all fluent in Nepali and English. And they were a huge help for us for that. So we do make every attempt to make sure that when we know we're going into a neighborhood where there are languages spoken that are other than English, that we have interpreters available.
Wonderful. I mean, the health equity sites have the health equity model. Do you think other counties are doing this?
I know that, I'm sure Anna Rundle and Howard County are, and I'm guessing Baltimore City is as well, to be honest with you, I've been so immersed in what we've been doing in Baltimore County that I really can't speak to the other counties. But I'm sure they must have, you know, some type of similar function. And we, I also just mentioned, we were partnering up today with the Air National Guard, who are going to be out with us at Deep Creek Middle to deliver the vaccinations out there.
That's amazing. Good job. Thank you. Okay, David Baicaw, did you want to make a comment or two?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. As I mentioned before, my name is Dave Baicaw. I'm the Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for Baltimore County. I recently took on this role last few months. Excited to be on this group. Most of my work over the past year has really been in the incident command for system for COVID and assisting Terri and that team and his team in moving from, you know, a county that was shut down to reopening to testing and far, much further in the background than Terri was on the front lines. But as we move out of the pandemic, I'm certainly looking for opportunities to provide emergency management recovery and resiliency and response that that caters to and understands the needs of the disability community. On a personal note, I have a 14-year-old son. I live up in Harford County. I have a 14-year-old son who is developmentally disabled. And he attended the John Archer Separate Day School there. I'm the PTA president of that school. So very excited to be, I'm very excited to be a part of this group to be doing this work because it is a very personal, it's a very personal cause for me. So thank you for allowing me to join.
That's fabulous news. I taught children with special needs and we're glad to hear you're on board. Thank you so much, David. All right. Any other questions for David or Terri? Quickly. We're going to try to move this meeting along and finish it at 1:10. Ben, get a question?
No.
Okay, good. All right. We're, we are, we sometimes don't know the roles of a lot of our commissioners. And once in a while, it's nice to meet them, have them tell us what they do and how they affect the world of disability in Baltimore County. Today, we're going to have Michael Tan. I hope I get this right. Michael works at CCBC. He's the Director of the Center for Alternative and Supportive Education and runs the Single Step and what other program? Well, he's very accomplished. There you go. Michael, take it away. Thank you.
Oh, I just realized. So it's muted. Yes, access. Well, we're going to get to that right now. Thank you, everyone. Actually, one of the first things I did as a commissioner while I was waiting to be appointed about nine, 10 years ago was present on the two programs. At that one, at that time, I was, had just stepped into the role as the Director of the Center for Access, which at that point was, it's a separate program known as the Center for Access or the Center for Alternative Customized College Education for Special Students. Boy, that acronym was a mouthful. And then about two years ago, we merged the Director for Single Step left and I applied for basically what was a merged position with both programs being under one roof. And that's where we came up with the Center for Alternative and Supportive Education, or what we're calling CASE here at CCBC. Actually, Michael, okay. So advance, please. There we go. Okay. My done button wasn't working. Okay. So as I said before, CASE is actually two programs. And these programs actually grew up independently back when CCBC was three separate campuses under one, that was then merged under one management system. But at this point, the access program grew up on what was the Council of Community College in the mid 70s and was started with federal funding mainly to provide workforce development and readiness for adults with disabilities. The Single Step Program, right around the same time, was started at the, what was Dundalk Community College and was providing on-campus classes specifically mainly English and math classes, a handful of English and math classes for adults with intellectual disabilities. But both, I'm very proud to say, both programs have provided services to the community for over 45 years. In fact, we're, Single Step is heading towards its 50th within the next couple of years. So we're going to have to do a big to-do about that. And the idea of both programs is to provide educational opportunities to adults with developmental and intellectual disabilities and along a spectrum of abilities. The way I like to say it is that we at CCBC can basically, can basically provide services to just about anybody in the community, especially on the intellectual disability spectrum. We have students in our credit programs who may need, who may need some accommodations or assistance, but otherwise are getting degrees or going through our, the major certificate programs here at the college, which can include apprenticeships. Then we have Single Step for those, for the students who probably aren't cut up for or aren't ready for credit programming. And then for those who aren't independent enough to navigate the Single Step Program, we have ACCESS, which specializes particularly in working with students who are in day programming with DDA certified agencies and other mental health providers. And I will get more into the details of that. But the idea being that chances are, there is a place for you at CCBC with course programming. Okay, so first, I'm going to talk about ACCESS, which I've, which is, which I've been the Director of the longest. That kitchen is actually at Ark of Howard County. And that's my instructor, Deb, and one of our students at a cooking class that we do onsite at that, at that agency. In the lower right-hand corner, that is, we actually have a contract too with Lock Raven Rehab Center. So one of my instructor goes structures, at least during normal times, goes two nights a week and teaches a two-hour art class for, for the clients over with the vet program there at Lock Raven Rehab. So CASE and ACCESS, we're looking to provide classes and training for adults with intellectual developmental differences who may participate in day programming with DDA-funded agencies, day programming with mental health care providers. We have a longstanding contract with Spring Grove, for example, which, where all the services are provided onsite because those are all residential facilities. And also, I'm looking at expanding, we've done a limited amount of services, but I'm really looking to expand into what would be more classic open enrollment classes that, that students who are receiving funding through self-directed services would be able to attend on their own. As I said, ACCESS really, it really grew up providing courses to agencies. So the idea being that you contract, we can't, the agency will contract with us, they'll choose their classes, the time and days they want to have them. They choose the individuals who'll be in the classes. I provide the instructor. And we have about 45 different courses that currently that we offer. And we're, we're always creating new things. We, one of the things I love about CCBC, in particular, continued education side of the house, is that we can react very quickly as opposed to the credit side when it comes to creating new courses and offering new things. Basically, once somebody comes up with an idea, I can get a new course off the ground in probably about two weeks from start to finish. That includes me creating the course, submitting it, working on the scheduling, recruiting one of my instructors to teach it, and then getting that instructor either in the classroom or online to be able to teach it. ACCESS is, focuses on academic skills, life skills, and then what we call our self-expression. And so, for example, our academic classes, we're looking at applied skills for our individuals in reading comprehension, basic math, and critical thinking, but all with the purpose of real-life activities with it. So reading comprehension might be reading, I was going to say reading a newspaper article, but for example, reading an online news article. And actually, critical thinking can also, is also incorporated into that. Basic math, we're talking about the type of math skills that we use every day without even thinking about it. Life skills. So I've rather, I usually parse out our pre-employment skills, but I'm putting in with life skills for purposes of this. And I know I'm talking a little fast and I'm going a little fast because I've got 27 slides and about 20 minutes. And the thing is, I've shared this presentation with Jay so he can push it out to all of you as well as I'm more than happy to answer any questions later. But I want to give you at least a snapshot of exactly what it is that my programming does. Essential employment skills, for example, and we've actually married, gotten creative and married our employment skills with theater techniques, for example. We're actually running a class right now for an agent, for actually David, for your agency, dealing, that combines using theater skills and techniques, including role-playing, improvisational games, to teach basics, basic employment skills. Self-advocacy and assertiveness, we've done quite a bit of assertiveness training in classes in the past. Personal, basic personal finance, healthy cooking and kitchen safety, as you saw in the picture above, computer skills, communication and social skills, that's a big one. And again, using real-life examples and then stress management, anger management, those are two, also two core classes that we give. All of, all of the instruction that both of my programs do is meant to be experiential. None of these classes are, are based on a lectured note-taking model, which isn't the most effective way to, to teach this population. So it's all about hands-on skill and interactive activities, whether in, whether in small groups, individual, or in pairs. Self-expression, art for wellness. If you saw, if you see behind me, the print, that is from Art in the Round, one of our, one of our students with the Art Baltimore, actually did, did that painting. And I've got several other pieces of artwork, including pottery from various agencies in my office, from various agencies. But we're also, we're always proud to have students with it, featured with Art in the Round, from actually about half a dozen of the agencies that we, that we work with. Pottery, we've, we can offer pottery at our Catonsville campus. We have a pottery studio there that we, that we can make use of, that the credit students have as well. Drawing, theater, that's been a big one over the past few years. I've got a couple of instructors with theater backgrounds. So this is, but the idea of coupling script reading and improvisational acting, tongue twisters, all those things, bearing that with communication and self-advocacy skills, giving people the confidence to be able to speak up for themselves, using these, using these types of techniques and venues to be able to do storytelling. This is a fun one. I actually have a film clip, which I don't have time to show you, but of a class where the individuals learned, learned the story, where the wild things are. And actually, the students narrated, acted, and were the characters that were in the book, as well as some of, as well as at times being the backdrop. So they actually had, they actually had some sets, there are some set pieces that they used. But, but it was a fantastic example of not only the ability to tell a story and to communicate, but just basic skills like sequencing. To get a story right, you have to get the elements of it in the right order. And for, for a lot of the developmental disability population, sequencing is a challenge. And so being able to get all of that right, and they memorize dialogue too, within it. Hand sewing. So we're talking about manual dexterity and as well as creating, doing something creative. My instructor basically says, if you can write your name in cursive, you can hand sew. And a lot of our, and a lot of our, a lot of our individuals can. Okay. So within the ACCESS Program, to give you an idea. So basically, how we work is that we either reach out to agencies or they reach out to us. We decide, you know, if the program is right for them. We sign a letter of intent for a year because basically the way this works is the pro, the CCBC contracts with the agency itself to do this. Then the agency will choose the classes, the dates, and the times, and the individuals who are going to, who are going to attend those classes. And they populate the classes. I provide the instructor and, and the instructional materials for those classes. And historically, we've been on a trimester schedule. So it's 16 weeks on, one week off, a break in between, and then another 16 weeks. The pandemic threw that completely out the window when we were able to start classes again after they stopped what, May, March 23rd, I think it was. We've sort of, we've got, we're more on a rotating basis. You want to start a class, we'll start a class, you know, maybe next week, and you started, want to start another class two weeks later. And we've adopted an eight-week rather than 16-week model, which gives us more flexibility as well as more variety for the individuals in the programs. So that's the ACCESS Program. The one thing that I am looking at, again, because we've always worked on this agency contracting model, is providing, is, is being able to provide services for, for those individuals who are getting self-directed services funding. So they're not working with, with an agency, but are interested, they're based, but are operating at about the same level and want classes. So I'm working on developing open enrollment classes that individuals by themselves can sign up for, probably mostly during the day, but I'm looking at evening and weekend options as well, to provide classes for, for those people. So stay tuned with that. And I am the primary director right now. I had to cut back on staffing temporarily due to the pandemic, but I'm hoping to bring my program coordinator back, back online by the fall. Okay, so Single Step, and these are two of our students. This is actually, yeah, one of them in class, it's JP at the top, we call him the mayor. And actually, some of our students also provides or receive services with, with our, with the DDA agencies in the area. But Single Step, as I said, it's, we're, we're talking about individuals who once they're on campus can navigate the campus independently to their classes. And we do have van transportation available for cost, where we can pick you up at your, if you were in Baltimore City or Baltimore County, we can pick you up at your house and bring you to campus. All of these classes are regularly either at the Dundalk Campus or the Catonsville Campus. The Catonsville Program is, it's a bit smaller numbers-wise, just because it hasn't been there as long and we have a longer-standing relationship with, with the folks on the east side. But I, we occasionally also offer classes up at Owens Mills at the, our extension center there. So for Single Step, we're talking about adults with intellectual developmental differences who are independent enough to navigate the college campus, as we said, although they tend to do it in clusters or groups because they quickly make friends and, and will, will hang out together. So most of our students are coming for programming first thing in the morning. The 9:15 class is, is an English literacy class. So it's working reading skills at four different levels. And then, then a math class, then we have our communications class, which is mainly writing, but some speech and then giving speeches, giving speeches. And then we have our math classes after that. They're all about an hour in length. And then we've got electives in the afternoon, which are anything from sustainable art to, to theater. And we started a physical education classes as well a couple of years ago. And we're kind, and we've actually got a government, how government works class that we're offering this fall. So a lot of our students are coming first thing in the morning and basically staying all day. So then they're making use of the cafeteria at lunchtime and have full run and rain on the campus. Our students, some of our students are coming to find training for a job. And I'll talk more about our, our career, our career skills classes and program, certificate programings. Like I said, our bread and butter as their classes are, are the reading, writing, and math skills, but also other life skills, including money management skills. Some of our students are, they need a transition from high school or where, or being out of high school for a while before they can, they're ready for credit classes. So we may help some students with their reading and writing and math to get them ready to then go on to credit classes. Sometimes it's just a matter of adjustment and be getting comfortable with a college environment, being on your, on your own in a college environment before, before somebody may be ready to take credit classes. And we've had both of those types of people come, come through our, our door. Some of, and some of our, our students who move on to credit classes, I can think of a couple in particular, enjoy our elective classes so much that they'll, they'll sign up for them and among other things, so they can see their friends and be in class with their friends during, during the day. I should underscore that, as I said, mentioned before, all, both my programs are, are with the continuing education side of the house. So these are, these students are not getting degrees, although they, like I said, we do have certificate programs with locally recognized certificates for our career training programs. Okay, but the wonderful thing is that, and what we hear so often within, within things like transit, going to transit, high school transition events, is parents will say, you know, Andrew's older brother is going to University of Maryland. Andrew wants to go to college too. Andrew's not suited for getting a four-year degree at University of Maryland or even a two-year associate's degree at CCBC or Howard Community College, wherever it may be. But we want Andrew to have a college-based experience as well. And that's exactly what we're here for. And if you can see the smile on my face, it's because I love being able to provide these types of opportunities. So within Single Step, our academic general studies fall into three major categories. We have our English, reading comprehension at four levels. We can accommodate students who are reading anywhere from kindergarten level through high school. And in fact, we just went through, we do end-ofsemester meetings with all our academic studies students for, spend a half an hour with, with the student, usually with their families, and then are the instructors. The instructors can give feedback on how the students have done. I was thrilled. This was an unusual semester. There are probably about eight students who are going to be moving up between reading, writing, and math levels. Some of them moving from something, from an English II to an English III, which basically, the next step after English III is basically a college credit level English class. So I was, I was, I thought it was fantastic that we had so many students who progressed so far. We have seen students go up a grade level in a semester. And we've seen a couple of students, there's some occasionally go up a couple of grade levels with, with, within, within one semester of being with our instructors. Again, just like with ACCESS, the idea is these are not lecture, take notes classes. These are hands-on classes. The math classes, they're using manipulatives at the lower levels with the math one because it's mainly whole number operations. So, you know, they're, you know, they're putting things in cups, they're dividing things out during, when we went, when we went online, for example, one of our math teachers, because since they had, the students had to use materials that they had at home, where one of the students was using mini Snicker bars. So apparently, I understand subtraction was a big thing. The thing is, once they were subtracted, they never came back. But something as simple as that to be able to take, to, to teach math, math concepts. But our math goes, so our math goes everywhere from simple addition and subtraction up through, up through pre-algebra and algebra within the three levels. And our humanities courses, of which we have over a dozen, that will, that will offer, how government works, that's a new one. After the, all the craziness of this past political season, one of the, actually, this came from, idea came from one of our students saying, I really would like to understand why these, why what's happening is happening and what it means. So the idea of how government works, it's not only basic civics lessons, but it's also how to participate. how to participate meaningfully within the election process, or as a citizen. Theater communication and advocacy, these are just higher-level examples of the classes that access offers. And then history, art, and music, and combinations of those as well. A lot of, we have classes that will combine history, art, and music within a certain historical period and show how they're all interwoven. Life skills classes, personal finance, that's a biggie. Managing your money and your money and technology classes are ones that people often sign up for. Video game design and animation, actually being able to use computer-based programs to create video games. Those are two separate classes that we offer, and we have two levels of the video game design. And again, social employment skills, healthy cooking, kitchen safety, communication, and stress management are just some examples of the courses. And again, we're always coming up with new ones. This last year, we created about eight new classes, most of which were the ideas of either students, their families, or of our instructors. What makes, now, within Maryland, there are some community colleges that are providing programming similar to ours, within the basic academic studies. Montgomery College has, in particular, has a large program. Howard Community College has a smaller, more after, I call it after-school, that's really not fair, but it's more late-afternoon programming for students who are coming out of DDA agency services. Warwick Community College also has some programming. What makes CCBC really unique is the career programs that we offer. And I know I'm heading towards 20 minutes, so I'll, or a little bit more. So I'm going to go through these very quickly, but we often, basically, again, all of these career, the students, these are between one and two semesters. The students will receive a certificate from CCBC, as well as some, there are a couple of nationally-recognized certifications that are statewide, that come out of some of our programs as well, and working on more of those. But at least local employers know about our programs, and our students find jobs. So our career tracks, we have our childcare, and then the second step, what we call a stackable credential. You finish childcare, you can move on successfully, you can move on to infants and toddlers, which allows you to then work as a lead instructor in a daycare through basically the entire spectrum of children within that daycare. Childcare assistant, for those who aren't ready for, or not suitable, suited for a lead teacher position. Professional animal workers, Paws. Veterinary assistant, which is a stackable credential, it's the next step after Paws, successfully completing Paws. And then our veterinary assistant program is based on the other veterinary assistant program within continuing education. So it's just like with childcare, you're getting the same material, just in a different format. But we use the same, basically, the same types of objectives that the students would be getting through the other programs at CCBC. Warehouse technician and security guard, which we haven't run in a while. But our childcare, for example, I brag on this because our students, after two semesters, actually are recognized under the state of Maryland for the 90-hour certification, just like in any other childcare program you would get anywhere else in the state. And those are the courses. All of our internships are also coupled, or all of our career training programs are also coupled with an internship. So they're getting practical experience for at least one semester within the venue. Basically, childcare assistant, you're getting the first semester of our childcare program. But again, this is for people who aren't reading quite at the level to qualify for our childcare program, and aren't necessarily, want to work with children, but aren't suited to be the lead instructor in a classroom, but maybe the assistant. And then infants and toddlers, again, this is also, this is recognized by the state for the 45-hour certification. You complete that, you can work with infants and toddlers in a daycare. Professional animal workers, this is a really cool program. I have to give credit to Melanie Hood Wilson, the previous director, for creating this. These students are getting basic, two classes in animal studies. So they're learning animal nutrition, they're looking to, they're learning how to recognize the signs of distress within different types of animals, as well as then how to calm them, how to assist somebody at a veterinary hospital, or a clinic, or at a daycare. For example, to assist a veterinary assistant by being able to hold the animal, so the assistant can, the vet assistant can examine them. So they're getting the animal studies piece, but they're also getting the front office clerical work piece. So they're also, they're getting, they're getting all the same, they're taking the same clerical studies class that our office skills students are, to be able to work a front desk, to answer the phones, greet customers and clients, and schedule appointments. And then, those are the classes involved with that. Veterinary assistant, again, this is what we call a stackable credential. If you're suitable for moving on from Paws, we can give you even higher-level training. So now we're talking about practical skills for veterinary assistants, anatomy and disease. They are, I've sat on those classes. Some of the slides are gross, but they're basically learning about the common diseases that cats and dogs, for example, they come in and exhibit, as well as birds and some other small animals. Office skills, you want an entry-level position in an office setting, you're going to get the clerical work training, so things like filing systems, working within Microsoft applications, what you need to know to work in an office, answering the phone, basic customer service skills. And then, and actually, our office skills students, lately, we've been able to place them for their internships in offices around the campus. So we've had a student with, at the dental hygiene school, one with the criminal justice and nursing program, and then one with our registrar's office. And then warehouse technician, if you're not suited to work in an office or be indoors, necessarily, our students are getting, actually, I've got a cohort of students with Doors who are starting forklift certification training on Thursday. They're going to be out in one of our parking lots out back, basically, spending four days operating a forklift, learning how to do so. But you're learning the basic reading and math skills that you need to work in a warehouse with inventory, with working with handheld technology for inventory work. And then the methods and safety, all the OSHA, all the OSHA stuff that you need to know for that. I've been asked to talk a little, because I've mentioned it before, about the training partners that we have with Single Step. Doors is a big one. And in particular, we offer all of the trainings you see listed at the Workforce and Technology Center. The childcare, professional animal workers, and warehouse technician classes are ones that were created by CCBC. The next several were actually created with Doors personnel, the corporate clients, and CCBC providing instructors. But most of the, this curriculum is being provided by the corporate partner. So for example, CVS, we do retail sales, retail training, that they can work, and they spend time working in a local CVS store, being able to restock shelves, work with customers, run the correct cash register. We are working on, but have not yet rolled out because of the pandemic, a pharmacy technician training, which is basically a 26-week training. But again, these are Doors consumers who will be trained to be able to be pharmacy technicians in CVS stores. Starbucks barista, I love going to these trainings to observe, because they start every training, they actually have, they've created a mini Starbucks in the basement floor of the WTC from start to finish, and they do tastings, where the students basically have to run a tasting of either a tea or coffee, pair it with a pastry, so we get all that stuff from a local Starbucks. And then, but then they have to lead you through, as if you were a customer, what the tasting notes, for example, for particular blends of coffees. And they're also getting, working within a local store that's specifically a training venue. It's actually over by Hopkins and Kennedy Krieger. Sephora Warehouse Training, this is a new, brand-new program, we just rolled out this past year, it got a late start because of COVID, but they're actually up at the online sales fulfillment center up in Hartford County on the floor. They get one week of classroom training on Sephora policies, and then, and basically, what's expected them within the warehouse, they spend the next eight weeks cycling through the pick, put, and pack functions of the warehouse. And typically, by the end of the eight weeks, they're filling out the paperwork and becoming full-time employees. This program is specifically for people who want full-time employment, so it's a minimum of 40 hours a week. And during their high-volume times, like during sales or special events, and then during the holidays, they're actually called in to work 60-hour weeks. So they may be there from 5:00 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon, on Monday through Friday, and then working a 10-hour shift on Sundays as well. And then automotive detailing and repair, the WTC actually has a full automotive shop, including a paint room. So the students are being able to put cars on lifts and do minor servicing, as well as learning auto detailing. And they're running several cohorts throughout the year, as many as four times a year, these trainings are running at Doors. We also have a work with the Summer Youth Employment Program with Duke, Baltimore County. In fact, we're gearing up for that. The interns, we're going to support them in an online platform for about two weeks, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, where they're basically helping them with essential and soft skills training. And then we'll be working with ongoing support through other modules of Career Edge throughout the summer, providing assistance and following up with students who are having difficulty completing the online training modules. Admissions criteria being over the age of 16, ability to manage and complete the coursework, obviously. We want our students to be successful. Ability to regulate behavior in a college setting, this is important. Our students are under the same code of conduct as anybody else who sets foot at CCBC. And then our career programs, again, since we want to set students up for success, have either reading and/or math levels within them. And again, you'll get all these materials, so you'll be able to see what they are. Admission process, you contact our office by phone or email. We have, we've taken everything online due to COVID, which is great, because we're probably going to keep most of it online. So we'll send you links to be able to fill out all the application and intake paperwork for our program, which is, we do a separate intake from the rest of, from registering for other programs at CCBC. You'll schedule, and schedule and attend an assessment, they're all being done online now, and intake meeting during the assessment, we will do a short reading and math assessment so we know where to level you within our classes, or whether you are appropriate yet for the career training programs. If your reading level is close, for example, if you're reading at a fourth or fifth-grade level, and we need a sixth-grade level for office skills, what you typically will recommend is that you take our English literacy course, a Level 2 course, and then we retest and assess and see where you are. And typically, we can get a student into the program that they want within one or two semesters, and then you register for classes. Those are all, they're typically private-paid. The career training programs, we work closely with Doors counselors, and have a great success record with getting those training programs paid for by Doors. And then that's the contact information. And I thank you for your time. Again, I went really quickly and still went over my time, and I apologize for that, Terry and Ben. But if you have time for questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, or to answer them offline. And everyone's in their gardens now, I don't understand.
That was amazing. You know, I've been involved with the commission for over 20 years, and when I try to recruit other people, to tell them how important it is to learn new things and new opportunities, I just can't believe, I learned something there every time. It's so good to be able to take that back to people who need this opportunity. Are there any questions?
I have two questions.
Sure.
Do you work, I know you work with transition for Baltimore County schools.
Yes.
Do you work at all with the Mansef schools?
Yes. Yes, a lot of our students, actually, a lot of our students have come from Harper School in particular, we have a very close relationship, as well as St. Elizabeth's. We've actually also provided some of our career training programming at their camp, at least at St. Elizabeth's campuses. But yes, we do work with the Mansef schools as well.
And the thing that, of course, is one of the biggest issues is employment, transportation. So how have you tackled that with regard to your training programs and working to get people to the training center to get, you know, the programs that they're enrolled in, plus your campus?
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so there's, because, yeah, there's the two different pieces of that. A lot of our career training program students will pay for and use the van transportation that we offer, because Doors will pay for that. Or, actually, I should not commit Doors to anything, but we have a great success record in the past, and Doors covering the cost of the van transportation to and from our, the Dundalk campus, all of the career training programs happen at the Dundalk campus, the ones that are on campus. And we have great success in getting those funded, but we occasionally have private-paid students that will also pay for that. It's either that or mobility. A lot of our students take mobility. Some of our students will take the Campus Shuttle from Essex, because we do have a Campus Shuttle that runs for all of our students, so all they needed to get is the student ID, and they can take, and I've got students who will, God love them, they're taking the 7:30 Shuttle from the Essex campus to make our 9:15 classes here at Dundalk. So that's what's happening, that's what happens there. As far as, and then as far as getting out to the internships, we provide the van transportation to the internships as part of those internships. So when they're going out to, for example, the doggy daycares, or kennels, or wherever it may be, or the childcare, the daycare centers, we are providing the transportation with our CCBC vans to those locations. With the trainings happening at the Workforce and Technology Center, the students are responsible for getting to the center to do the trainings that are held on-site there. And then the center and the Door staff and CCBC works together to provide the transportation that's necessary to get them to their internships.
Jay, you had a question? Oh, David.
Oh, Ben, sorry. Okay, I'll ask. Thank you, Michael, that was great. I saw some of our, I consider them our folks, but, so, Club 1111 people, JP, he's not mayor of the league, but he might be mayor of CCBC. We have our own. But, question, why would a Mansef school or St. Elizabeth's, why would they contract? I know why I do, because I don't have those expertise and those teachers and those programs that you have. So we contract with you to bring that good stuff to make a more full program of what we offer. But those are special-needs schools that have teachers that do all that, why wouldn't they do that themselves? Or should I shut up and not take?
Well, actually, to the extent that we've run that program there at those schools, it's basically, it's the expertise in the curriculum, it's infrastructure. But they can create their own Paws, they're more than happy, they want to create their own Paws curriculum, they can. But we've already got it ready to go, and instructors who are skilled in being able to do that. So it's usually, it's the unique programming. It was, we've done surf save training with those schools and culinary in the past, but it's usually been something like Paws or childcare that we have done with them. Yes.
Michael, thank you so much, a wonderful presentation. I want to ask you about your partnership with county economic and workforce development. Specifically, I remember Mary Manzoni, she informed us she's not able to attend today's meeting. But in March, when we had the very lengthy conversation among all the providers, and you participated in that, and then at the end of that, Mary said, "Oh, I'm opening up this career center, that career center, that career center, and I'm interacting with Michael Tan in some way." What I don't understand is that I assume that, you know, a Baltimore County career training center- What I don't understand is that I assume that, you know, a Baltimore County Career Training Center under, you know, economic and workforce development, they're serving the population at large. How is it a distinct service for individuals with disabilities where, you know?
That's a good question, because we're, we were specifically called in to handle that one program, the Summer Youth Employment Program, which is for high school age and pre-high school age students who actually get a, participate in it and get a paid internship. Now, what worked, hopefully, you know, working over the summer. Now, in particular, how we were brought in is they receive referrals from Department of, our Division of Rehabilitation Services. They also receive referrals and get a cohort of students from Department of Social Services and from Juvenile Justice, Juvenile Services. So in particular, it was for those populations that, that we historically provided soft skills training. Historically, what it was is that there was one Saturday from about nine to three at the Essex campus and one for the east side people. And one Saturday on the west side of the Catonsville campus, that about a hundred and twenty students would converge on the campus, would, would get a large, have a large group informational session with the, with the folks from dude about how they're into, what the, what the summer program was about. And then they would break into small group classrooms, about five or six classrooms. And they'd spend the rest of the day working on communication skills, teamwork. All basically, all the, the big, if things as basic as, as personal hygiene, but, and expect, but expectations from the workforce. And they would, so they would get that, that soft skills training. But in particular, we were brought in through our expertise, we're working with their special, special needs population.
Okay, so you, you just said a hundred and twenty kids came to your campus, you know, those are a hundred and twenty young people with some form of a disability.
Perhaps, yeah, that's a mixture of the, the folks from juvenile service, juvenile services, from, from social services and from rehabilitative services. So yes, but, but a lot of them, it's also concurrent. And with some of them, it may be mental health or behavioral problems. And that's an aspect I really talk a lot about, but what we've been seeing more and more is that we've also been working with people with mental health disabilities, either concurrently with the developmental and intellectual disabilities. Or, or there is something about their other, those mental health disabilities that make traditional learning environments not work for them, where we would work for them.
Well, I appreciate that, I think I'm going to follow up with Mary. Because I didn't understand, you shed a lot of light on it, but I, I think that's very interesting what's happening, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Oh my gosh, it's just such a blessing to see the opportunities for all kids nowadays. And your enthusiasm doesn't hurt with the program. I can see how excited you are on this, it's wonderful, so much.
I just, yeah, actually, I'm giving a presentation for, for PG County Transition Personnel. Now that we've gone online, we were actually expanding and, and looking to open, offer programming outside of Baltimore County. As long as we don't step on the toes of one of our sister schools. As long as, as long as we're not, you know, stepping on the toes of any other community college or college in, in the state, we can provide that program. We actually had somebody in our Paws program from Alberta, Canada this past semester. So now we've got to figure out how to get him an internship where he is, as opposed to, as that all opens up. As opposed to making him schlep, but God love him, he was, with the time change, he must have been, you know, in our nine fifteen classes at like six, six fifteen in the morning.
Oh my gosh.
But he did it and did well.
Again, it's just so nice to see children like this having the same opportunities. So other counties don't have this as extensive as a, of a program?
Montgomery County comes close with its academic skills classes, they don't have the, but they don't have the roster of career training programs that we have. And I've actually given a presentation at PG County, they're, the PG Transition Council has, is, is constantly looking for ways to do, for example, like the, a pause, start a pause program or childcare program down there. But again, we have the ability of a long track record, you know, with these programs, you know, fifteen, twenty years with these programs. I would, I can imagine starting all of this programming from scratch today. I can build on what we have, and I'm actually looking at new programs. We've, we've tried things like retail sales in the past, but I've also been talking with some parents this, this past week. I'm like, they've given me some ideas of some other career training programs that, that I, within the next two years, I may try.
What a wonderful opportunity for all students to be able to go on after high school. Thank you so much, oh my gosh, I really appreciate that. Okay, we're going to switch gears to, yes, we're going to have another, yes, thank you, good job, Michael. Another virtual awards lap. It's going to be up for the twentieth, we'll get all these dates out to you. Nominations will come out in June, do an August selection in August again. We're hoping to hire the same biographer and have the same MC. So with things hopefully getting back to normal, we're looking at our committees again to possibly start up, maybe virtually again. Ben, Doug and Jay and I talked about this. Doug, if you want to speak a moment about the idea that you're going to be running with as far as recruiting maybe college-age commissioners?
Good afternoon, everyone. So, so yes, we're, you know, we're always looking at how we can add more advocates and more people with disabilities or in the field of disabilities. And one of the things in our strategic plan is recruiting younger people. And so what we're going to do, or, or I'm going to lead off, is reaching out to a lot of the universities in the area and their Office of Disability Services. And invite some people as our guests to come and attend, see if it's something that they're interested in, and see if it's something that they may be interested in joining us.
Ben and I are getting old during this, I'm speaking for myself, Ben, but after being, you know, chairperson and vice chair for over twenty years, we do need some younger people. And this is one of the things that actually came out of our strategic planning. And then the Granicus appointments, Jay, you want to speak to that, because that's something that's going to be ongoing for a while.
Yes, I feel pretty good that we've made progress in terms of appointments. I believe we have seventeen members with current appointments. Of course, we have breaking news in that category with David Baikoff joining us today. So I just, I'm reading the tea leaves and I get this feeling like, you know, we've had some good talks with the executive office. We've had some offers of assistance from them. It was suggested that we talk to the executive office about diversity, and I had that conversation. And I think they're going to keep a lookout for that. But Terry, myself, Ben, we kind of are looking at names. And we have probably eight names on our list. Terry Parish recently brought wonderful resumes and candidates to us who are younger people with individuals with disabilities. David Baikoff helped us fill a necessary position representing the fire department. We do have some county representative slots that are currently open, we probably have about half of them done, but there's more to go there. I believe this is an opportune time for us to make progress with appointments, I think the executive office is hearing us, so we will continue to pursue that.
Thank you. And then there was another initiative that is being examined in Montgomery County that's called floating bus stops. Ben is going to be helping us work with them to see if this is something that's going to be successful or not. And brought to Baltimore County, you want to say anything about that, Ben?
Just briefly, there's a whole issue about safety, especially with these floating bus stops and, and safety of pedestrians who have disabilities. So I'm going to try to work with some of our county and state legislators who are dealing with really pedestrian safety. And it's critical that we, you know, we don't let it get out of hand, that they start putting in all these bus lanes or bike lanes. And then we have difficulty with people with mobility issues waiting on a, a street corner for a public transportation. And they have to cross over a bike lane and the light. So it's, it's something that's, it's real and apparently Montgomery County is wrestling with it. I know DC had had several hearings with regard to these bike lanes and the safety of individuals with disabilities.
It really is something we need to stay on top of. And I think then you're going to also be looking at people with a more diverse population. I think we need to look at different groups in Baltimore County and make sure that those people with disabilities are represented also. So some of these ideas, again, trying to get back to some type of normalcy within the commission. We're going to be asking people which of these ideas they may be interested in working on in a work group. The other thing we threw around was, it really is unfortunate we're not be able to get together, but safety is an issue. Thinking about having a picnic, I'm not sure if we're going to be, going to be able to do this, or even what the interest might be. We had a picnic a couple of years ago at the Meadowwood Park picnic area, and that was pretty successful. And if we do this, it won't be a work picnic, it'll be just to get together. We're going to have an executive, go ahead. We're going to have executive committee retreat again. And right now, the three work groups, we're looking at, starting or beginning again, are legislation, legislation, education and transportation. And again, we want input from people if they want to, they feel there are other issues. But again, these are some of the things that came out of our strategic planning. So getting back to some kind of normalcy within the commission, we're going to be asking everyone to identify either one of the things that Doug and Ben and Jay and I are going to work on. Or a startup committee on legislation, education and transportation. Any other comments, questions? This is a record time, a minute, an hour and five minutes, I noticed that, oh, Jay, go ahead.
I did send out the March minutes about two weeks ago, I can put them on screen. Or can we consider approving them, having that opportunity?
Move for approval.
Second, who would like to second?
I believe Mary seconded.
Second. Second, my little guy says second.
I, I will call for anyone that doesn't approve, so that we, we would assume one would approve if there are no questions. Thank you for reminding me of that, Jay.
Thank you, Commission.
Any other questions, concerns, announcements? This was a great meeting, I thank everyone for your time, we'll be in touch. The, we are going to have another virtual luncheon. Jay did such a great job with that last year, that's your real skill, Jay, you really, you really shone through with that with Brian, thank you. So nominations will be coming out, it'll be on a downsized scale again for recognizing people. I thought they did a great job last year. We'll be talking about possible small sponsorships to raise a little bit of funds so that we can compensate Brian for his work. Any other questions about that? Look for the nominations, have a safe summer and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.